Mr. Clerk, are you ready?
We are ready.
All right, then, let's call to order the special meeting of the City Council for May 3rd, 2022.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Present.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Kusakian.
Here. May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022, Special Public Meeting of the City Council is posted on April 27th, 2022, on the Bulletin Board outside City Hall.
We have two items. Can you please read the first item into the record? And then the second item was actually added. Let me ask the city manager, should we take the first item, the second item first, since it's just something that is procedural and it's acceptance of a grant? I hope no one, would any of my colleagues object to that? Because I think the first item will require some discussion, and we can release our police chief to his regular duties.
Most definitely, Mayor Kusakian, and that being a consent item, you can just, if you don't need additional information or a review of the item, it's just on the consent calendar.
Sure, let's first, it wouldn't normally be on consent, but I know that this is, timing is of this essence. Let's have it read into the record.
Item number two is Police Department regarding acceptance of additional funding from the United States Department of Homeless Security, 2019 State Homeless Security Grant Program, and the amount of, amount up to $150,000, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment agreement with the County of Los Angeles for the award of additional funds under the fiscal year 19 SHSGP Grant Program, B would be Resolution Appropriation in the amount of $150,000.
Thank you. And in the spirit of transparency, and because this was added at the last minute, I'd like to ask the chief to give us a brief report to us and the public as to what this grant funding is for, and then we can take action on it.
Good afternoon, Mayor Kusakian, members of council. Call Public Health Police Chief. This is a grant funding opportunity from the State Homeland Security Grant Program. There were some unused funds within the pool from, I think, the 2019 grant, if I recall correctly, that they were looking to be able to utilize. We will be utilizing these funds for an upgrade to our radio system. We had already completed part of that upgrade with other grant funds, and we're at a position where these remaining grant funds will allow us not only, will allow us to finish the upgrade on our backup master site for a key management program that allows some remote programming of radios. So the funds will be accepted and then expended on something, and it will save the city a couple hundred thousand dollars.
So it'll be used to complete the build-out of our communications infrastructure?
Yeah, part of it, the KMF, part of it.
I'll move the item.
All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Kusakian.
Yes. Thank you. Now, going back to the item, and listed as item number one on the agenda, which we read into the record, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor.
You didn't read the item, no?
No.
All right, then, please, please read the item into the record.
Community Development Regarding Update on the Preservation and Reuse of City-Owned Property Located at Former Rockhaven Sanatorium, 2713 Honolulu Avenue, and Direction on Preferred Next Steps, A Motion Directing Staff on Preferred Next Steps Regarding the Preservation and Reuse of the Former Rockhaven Sanatorium Located at 2713 Honolulu Avenue.
Now, again, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. With that, rehashing the history of this site and the property that the city purchased back in 2008, there's been quite a bit of activity around and about the site recently, but the most notable being the state senator Anthony Portantino's Securement of an $8 million grant to preserve the site and to be, with the inclusion of a museum. Staff has done some preliminary work, more so on the estimation of the cost of a couple of concepts. You council members visited the site a few months ago, and we were briefed on the constraints and opportunities at the site, and we will be seeking direction on the next step after Mr. Calvert, Assistant Director of Community Development, is done with his presentation. Mr. Calvert?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Kusakian and members of the council. As an overview, the direction we're seeking from council today is kind of specific to the library function, or the potential for a library function. The reason why is because that has such an outsized impact on the site, and for us to be able to consider some of the other things that council gave us feedback on last time regarding potential commercial uses, affordable housing, things of that nature, we want to get some clarity on that potential library so that we can also move forward with other pieces. The goal would be to leave here today with some sort of program around the site so that we can put that, we can submit that to the state in order to be able to start tapping into those funds. Those funds are reimbursable. The city would have to upfront the expenses, but for us to be able to start moving forward with that, we need to give, give the state a program for the site. So again, just some brief history. Opened in 1923 as a private women's facility specialized in mental health care for women. We all know the site is historic. Many of the, most of the buildings, a vast majority of the buildings are historic. There's a handful in there that were built in the 1970s that are not, which would bring into consideration on how the grounds could be treated, especially as we start to open this up as a potential park. That is one of the considerations that was requested from council as well. This is just an overall site plan. You can see to the west and to the south, there's some vacant parcels. Those will come back as part of that conversation as potential location for a new library facility. And then you can see the layout of the existing buildings and the existing grounds. So the city acquired the property in 2008 for $8.25 million. An initial RFQ process was released in 2014, followed by an RFP process in 2016 to 2019. Between August 2019 and January 2020, there's an ENA to consider a boutique hotel for the site. Since then, the city has received, or has been noted about the $8 million grant, the reimbursable grant to improve the site and to create a museum. That is a key component of this, and that is part of the requirements for the grant. Some of, some of the buildings have been evaluated for some of the needs. And when we say needs, we mean stabilization of the roofs. That's one area of particular concern and consideration, but also the improvement of the grounds, and really kind of stabilizing the building so that there could be access to the buildings in general. Not fully upfitting them for commercial uses or full-on habitation by businesses, but to get them to a stable point where we could start moving forward with some sort of improvements if there was a business or some sort of commercial activity. In October of 2021, we had presented to council and asking the questions regarding what kind of uses would council like to consider for the site? The museum, obviously central to that. In a few moments, we'll talk about the, what's been identified as the likely best location for that museum, but then also exploring the feasibility to reuse portions of that site, the existing buildings after rehabilitation, for any kind of commercial or community uses. Those could be small businesses, they could be community meeting rooms, things of that nature. Staff was also requested to explore the options of relocating the Montrose Library. That could be through existing buildings, which is one option, or into a new facility, which is another. So as mentioned, there's two options here. The first is looking at new construction, and this is estimated to be at about $13.5 million for about a 10,000-square-foot library. This would be a brand-new facility, likely located in kind of this southern or southwestern corner of the site. This does provide kind of the greatest opportunity, but also visibility and access from Honolulu. So this would be the potential location for that new construction. The second would be looking at rehab or rehabilitation with some new construction with the existing buildings and looking at other smaller kind of vacant areas of the site. This is estimated at about $11.86 million for 11,700 square feet. There are some challenges to this. We'll go over those in a little bit. Really focused on kind of the inefficiencies that could be present, because that would take the library and then spread that into multiple facilities. So looking at things like safety, like security, making sure that there's visibility from one facility to another, that would either require additional staffing or security systems. Again, not things that we can't overcome, but just something to keep in mind that could influence that overall number by the end of the day. There are significant challenges with grade and ADA access here. As you, as you noted from the site visits, there are some pretty extreme changes in terms of grade. We would have to go back and put switchback ramps in to make sure we could get access in. Some of the interiors of the buildings also present some of those challenges, so that could require some significant changes. Any building that might be two-story is going to present some structural challenges. Carrying the dead load of bookshelves full of books is very different than kind of live loads that kind of move in and out of space. So there would, there would need to be some element of structural retrofit. But to obtain this estimate, we did have a consultant take a look at this and give us this kind of high-level number. Again, this is kind of preliminary estimate. It could go up, it could go down, but there's a lot of different considerations and factors for that. Highlighted here in the, in the kind of northeast corner, really looking at buildings J, G, and F, and then if there's the need to expand to additional square footage, there is some area available for about 2,700, 2,500 square feet of space to expand further. This would probably require some sort of enclosure or connection between all of these buildings so that each of them would be able to function holistically as a library facility.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Yeah, you mentioned, Mr. Calvert, you mentioned a consultant that looked at this, and we got a comment from the public with, looking for some more information. Do you have a name of that consultant, or any other information you could share with us?
I'd have to go back and look at that. I'm not sure if we had that in the report or not. It's, it's a similar consultant that we use with all of our other historic resources, but I, but I could get that information and provide that.
Okay, if you could, thanks.
So, with the two options, option A is pretty straightforward. There's good visibility for a new library facility, again, kind of facing right on, right on Honolulu. It is more costly as of right now with these, these estimates. The estimate for the new facility was based on other libraries built around Southern California, and that's where we came up with that kind of square footage estimate to come to $13.5 million. As noted, option B, that would spread the facility, or spread the library across multiple buildings. It would create, obviously, a very unique kind of ambiance and atmosphere for a library, especially in this kind of historic setting. But it is to be considered that there is some visibility challenges between the buildings that would need to be reconciled, really to ensure the safety of patrons there. And then the ADA and grade challenges, that's something that's going to be present in any of the existing buildings that we're going to have to rehabilitate. And, and part of the funding that will be used early on to stabilize these facilities is to deal with the ADA and the grade challenges to make sure that all these buildings are accessible. That is something we're going to have to do regardless, but should be taken into consideration with this, this kind of cluster of buildings, because there is some pretty extreme grade changes in that area. Some additional considerations, parking. We will likely need ADA parking onsite. That would impact the site. That location would obviously, or likely be to the west or to the south, depending on which alternative is selected. So that does have some impacts on the site, but largely on the vacant areas. The on-street parking that is there today is very, very heavily used. We would have the opportunity to potentially reconfigure the lane. The, the travel lane there is rather wide. We could likely convert that parking into angled parking that would net us about 30% to 40% more spaces than that are, that are there today with the parallel parking. As noted, the additional kind of security measures for library operations, really trying to prevent things like obstruction, obstructive views. We will be a little bit challenged, and there won't be any kind of large areas in terms of the rehabilitation option, and it would be spread across multiple buildings. The site itself needs to remain largely intact. It is a historic site. Any significant changes to that site would require and trigger environmental review. Renovations, additions, new construction, anything along those lines are going to trigger that. And there, it should be noted that the Montrose Library, the existing facility itself, could potentially be historic as well, which could impact any kind of future considerations for what that space could be used for or modified for.
No?
Try it again.
There we go.
So for the museum portion, the state grant is contingent on a museum function. We're expecting kind of a moderate-sized museum that could be well-integrated into the site, and what we believe is that the Pines Cottage Building would be probably the most befitting. Staff has spoken with the Friends of Rockhaven, and they have, they have also agreed that that likely is the most befitting building on the site to serve as a museum. There will be kind of extensive improvements that will need to occur. As mentioned before, there are ADA and grade challenges that exist there. There will be, there will need to be some structural improvements. After walking the facility, I'm sure many of you might have noted, some of the roofs that are kind of caving in on the interior, a lot of work will need to be done there to stabilize. Things like fire, life safety equipment going into the facility, HVAC, lighting, public restrooms, all of those will need to be factored in, and staff is confident that that can be, can be executed through the grant that, that we will ultimately have and the reimburseables that are there. As noted, Building C, the Pines Cottage, this one is identified as the most likely alternative for the museum function. Again, we'll have to address some of the parking issues. There may need to be parking onsite again, much like with the library for ADA, but that would provide some relatively easy access because we do have those vacant parcels to the, to the west. So we would be able to fit that in, though it would impact the site and kind of, kind of the setting of the site. So we would need to consider that carefully as we move forward with any proposal or any design along with that. And Councilmember Brotman, to go back to your original question, it was Historic Building Services Incorporated that helped provide that estimate.
Historic Building Services Incorporated.
We do want to touch on the topic of affordable housing. That was something that the council brought up at the last session. We do identify the parcels to the west and to the south as the most likely candidates. But again, the, the overall impact of the potential library is a question that we would like to reconcile first before we can identify those opportunities. Just having one of those parcels to use for affordable housing is very different than being able to have both, and the amount of housing, and potentially the attractiveness of that to any potential affordable housing developer, and how much can, can fit in there. One thing we do want to make sure that if we were to move forward with any consideration on that is protecting the historic integrity of the site. We would be looking for modest scale. We would not be looking for something like a five-over-one podium building that would not fit into this context. We'd want something that is compatible to the surrounding neighborhood, compatible to the Rockhaven site in general, so that it's something that kind of integrates well into that. Some of the buildings, depending on council's direction, could also be repurposed for any kind of supportive or community services. We did hear from council that the idea of public meeting rooms, things of that nature, should be considered as well. And again, all of these are kind of wrapped up, and if there's an alternative for the library that council would like to move forward with, or if not to move forward with that alternative, all of that kind of impacts our ability to identify which of these buildings could be used for such services and such, such businesses. In terms of the overall funding and cost, obviously, the library itself would, would exceed the, the grant, the grant for $8 million. The grant itself is obligated to be used towards museum or museum-related uses. Right now, to kind of bring that site into what we call kind of a limited public use, and that's having access to the site itself from a, from kind of a park perspective, stabilization of the buildings, the roofs, everything along those lines is coming in at about $3.5 million. We do estimate that that might go up a little bit, especially with the roof. The initial estimates that we received in bids regarding the roof, we're, we're starting to come in close to double of what we had expected. So, so really, to kind of stabilize the site, get it to a point where the, the park itself could be used or the grounds as a park, and to stabilize the buildings would get us close to about half of the grant, or about $4 million. Any additional funding, if we were to look for something along the lines of a library, would need to come from an alternative source. We do expect that that remaining $4 million, a very large portion of that, could be consumed by the creation of the museum itself for the Pines Cottage Building. As we noted, things like HVAC, life safety, ADA repairs will all need to be incorporated into that. So we do see most of that $8 million being consumed by the stabilization of the site, and then the creation of the, or of the museum, excuse me. So next steps, as, as kind of noted early on, what we wanted to identify from council is if, if there's a preferred alternative regarding the library, whether that's option A, the new facility, option B, rehabilitation, or option C, to not pursue that consideration so that we can essentially write a program for the site itself to use the grant, but then also to be able to determine what kind of commercial or community or residential uses that we could pursue. What we would like to do is be able to bring in a consultant to help us identify what kind of niche commercial market some of these buildings could, could kind of fulfill, and be able to get that kind of feedback and what would work well with that site. And then we would also, depending on this conversation regarding the library, be able to solicit any potential opportunities related to affordable housing after we understand how much of the site could be left available. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. What we'll do now is I'll give my colleagues each an opportunity, and hopefully, any questions they have and responses given to each council member, we'll try to limit to about five minutes. So each of us will have about five minutes of question and answer, followed by comments from the public, who has taken time out of their schedules to come here, as well as, I believe, we have one caller. And then followed by, afterwards, council can then make their comments before we do final deliberation and give you direction. So with that, Councilmember Brotman, you wanted to ask a few questions?
Yeah, one of the questions, I think you, you, Mr. Calvert, you answered mostly. So the, the grant, I was, I was kind of wondering, how far does the grant take us? And so you're saying, you think that grant could cover what we need to do for the Pines Cottage, for the museum, and it could, what you call stabilize, the other buildings? Does that mean that the interior of the buildings would not be accessible to the public? They would just be kind of, we would still have them closed off, but, but they would be at least not deteriorating further, and people could enjoy the grounds, or, or what?
A little bit of both. There, there could be potential for access to some of the, the buildings that are there. Depending on the programming, whether or not people would actually go inside them would be a different question. But we do anticipate that it would stabilize the interior of the buildings, stabilize the roofs themselves, and that they would become accessible at that point. That estimate also does include things like ADA access into the facilities. And then anything beyond that, let's say, we were to turn something into a community center, turn that into a coffee shop, that would be additional funds over what's been allocated.
And how about landscaping?
That would be part of, of the grounds. That would be part of that initial $8 million, getting those grounds improved into a point where it could be enjoyed as a park facility.
Okay, okay. All right, and then I guess the, well, then I have a question on the parking. So you say that the angled parking could is 30% to 40% more, but more on what, what, what are some numbers? Can you give us an idea of how many spots there are?
We would need to go back and do a little bit of work on that, because the spaces themselves aren't striped right now, so it's really just kind of counting linear feet, and then what that conversion would be to the angled parking. That is something that we would need to dig a little bit deeper into, and also see if there's any viability for that on any other sides of the site.
Okay, because it just doesn't seem like there's going to be a lot, even if we do angled parking.
And, and that is the question, and then one of the things to, to consider as we move forward with any potential uses that go in there. If it's a high-demand use, let's say, an assembly kind of space, it will present parking challenges, because off-site, we are, we are going to still be limited based on that conversion to parallel, or angled parking from parallel parking. And then also just the limitations on the site itself. How much do we want to impact that site to provide parking?
Right, like if we have a little restaurant or coffee shop or something, that's going to kind of jack that up. So that's something, yeah, a little worried about that. And then, I guess, I guess the last question is a general one, and maybe everybody will talk about it. It's really come, it's maybe not a question for you, but it's, how critical is it that we, we find a new home for that library? Because it sounds like there are a lot of challenges to bringing the library into Rockhaven. Is that, it, you know, this kind of predates me, but I know we've been talking for a long time about wanting to expand the fire station and move the library. Is, is that a nice-to-have, or is that a need-to-have? Do we have to find another location for the library if this doesn't work? I'd like a better sense of that.
Yeah, Mr. Member of City Council, Councilmember Brotman, the fire station, the Montrose Fire Station, does need upgrades, does need to be modernized. We are in the process of assessing all of our fire stations and their condition, assessing the conditions. As part of that study, we will have a better understanding of what components need to be upgraded and updated. But from what I've been told, the, the size of the station, as it stands today, doesn't, is not able to accommodate the new engine sizes. So eventually, it has to be expanded. Now, whether we reduce the size of the Montrose Library to accommodate that expansion of fire station, or, as you mentioned, we'll have to find an alternative location to move the library to so that we can do the expansion of the fire station.
Okay, because it seems to be a critical question here. Are we going to have to do some, I mean, if we say this is too expensive, but we're going to have to do something else that's equally expensive, that's something we ought to know.
Yes, and I, I would submit to you that we don't, as far as the expansion of the fire station is concerned, it's not an imminent need. Do we have to do it eventually? Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Who would like to ask questions next?
I'll go ahead, and I just want to make it clear what we would accomplish with this $8 million, because that's what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with $20 million, or $15 million, or whatever it would take to move that library, but plus with, if we, we do the museum, the landscaping, some parking, and the park, that would, are you saying that that would take up most of the $8 million?
And the stabilization of the buildings. So there's the, the roofs, ADA access, interior improvements. Not, basically trying to get to the interiors to a point where someone could eventually re-tenant that space and make further improvements. It's not going to be ready. It'll be a shell, essentially.
Okay, but that, that's for all the buildings?
Correct.
So there could be community use in there if someone wants to come in and, and do a little bit more work on the building?
If more work was done, yes. They, they won't be ready for a community use or a community space.
Okay, and if we do all of that, then Rockhaven could be open to the public and enjoyed, correct?
Correct. The grounds could be open, and then eventually, when we get to that point with the museum, it could be open as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Agajanian?
When was the last time the engineers looked at the buildings?
We would have to check, excuse me, with, with Public Works the last time they've looked at that. They, they've obviously looked at the roofs. We had a bid that was in process to stabilize and fix and repair the roofs. We've actually put that on pause right now because we want to get this program submitted for the library, or for the, for the museum itself, so that we could then get reimbursed for that.
So you don't remember, like, a year ago, two years ago, five years ago, 10 years of approximation? You don't have to be correct. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Agajanian, I believe it was the pre-pandemic, so it must have been at least three years ago. This is kind of a long time. Yeah, it hasn't been recent. So because we were there, I guess it was six months ago, seven months ago, we visited the site, and the buildings are in dire situation. I mean, these are not your ordinary building that you're going to go and remodel or renovate, or... This needs serious study on the buildings before anything can be decided, in my opinion. This is, needs further review of the buildings, because three years is also a long time for a building who, I mean, a building which is in bad situation, maybe now it's worse. Can be dangerous building, some of them, not all, but, or one of them, or some of them can cause serious, will be serious consequences, in my opinion. It should be seriously revisited by engineers and do a thorough study of every single building. So I don't know, here, and we know, any building, when they come in, and especially buildings are not like something you can look and say, oh, okay, this is... Any building, regular buildings, when you want to do, you bring somebody in, even the specialists, they say it will cost you $2 million, or $20,000, doesn't matter. After they start doing it, they come up and say, oh, now we realize we have to do this or that. If you did remodeling in your home, they come and they want to do something, they say, oh, by the way, we have to change this piece. You know, additional work they ask for. In my opinion, these are, before we say what we want to do, it needs serious study, more than what we have done just going and look at it and coming back. I'm very worried that they say $8 million. I visited the site. I don't know the integrity of the buildings. I did not report any professional engineer report. This is just by looking at the buildings. In my opinion, this needs much more than $8 million, even more than $11 million. $11 million. After they open up something, there will be change of orders, and change of orders are very expensive because you become slave of the contractor, because you can't bring somebody else. So they will offer, or they will ask for more money, and you're bound to pay them. So this is, in my opinion, it needs more serious engineering study on these buildings. Even 13 million or 15 million, I do not think will be enough for this site.
Mr. Member Agajanian, I believe our city manager has a comment, or do you like to?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of City Council, Councilmember Agajanian, those points are very well taken. They're valid points. What Mr. Calvert was referring to is a rough order of magnitude as far as estimation is concerned. You are absolutely right. We have not done a thorough analysis, engineering or structural analysis of these buildings. However, Senator Portentino's state grant, as was noted, is contingent upon the inclusion of a museum. So the first order would be for that building to be evaluated, and it will be evaluated thoroughly, and it's a standard procedure. We will not put any plans out to bid without that analysis. And you're right, the analysis, the technical analysis, the structural integrity analysis may come back and say, no, 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 this, this building, to stabilize it, it's going to need, for argument's sake, $2, $3 million, in which case we'll come back to council and say, now we have an analysis that says our estimate was, for lack of a better term, out of whack, and we will not be able to stabilize the rest of the buildings. However, in order to be able to have an operational museum and open the grounds to the public, like Mr. Calvert mentioned, we have to stabilize the site, we have to provide ADA access, we have to provide disabled parking, all of that will have to come into play. And we may end up using the entire $8 million just to, to have the opportunity to open up the museum and the site and all the ADA facilities that need to be in place, in which case we'll come back.
Based on that, what you're saying, I agree with it. You're, you're correct. But I'm saying that $8 million, if you use it for a museum, it means, how many building will include that museum? Just that one building which is mentioned here?
Just one building. That would be the, the Pines Cottage Building, which is C on this map here.
Yeah, but the balance of the building, what we're going to do, if there is a, let's assume that's a museum, then what you do with the balance of the building? People will come, they will hang around the other buildings, and those, some of them are dangerous buildings.
And that would be the point of the stabilization, so that they do not pose a danger from the exterior. They may still be limited in terms of access to be able to go inside. And part of this, too, is for us to be able to fully accurately estimate what it would take to kind of improve all of these buildings, we do need to get a bit of a handle on what kind of uses would, would go in there. A restaurant or a coffee shop is going to have very, very different requirements than, say, a gift shop or a reading room or a community facility. So being able to get a handle on what these kind of opportunities are will help us hone better into that, that estimate. And as Mr. Galanian said, the museum is the most important part. That's the first part. The entire grant's dependent on that. If we do find that that eats into all of that, then we would not be able to stabilize some of the other buildings or maybe make some of the interior improvements. We do believe we can get them all to a point that's stable and safe from an exterior perspective so that people can use the grounds. And I think that's, that's one of the most important parts.
No, but you fix the museum part, let's say, everything is fine. But the other buildings, some of them, there are, they have chance of collapsing even. The way I saw it, the floor was the roots of the trees, if I'm not wrong, maybe that was where I was visiting. The floor came higher, right? The roots damaged the floor of the buildings. So if damage the floor of the building damaged the structure of the building, there is inherently dangerous buildings are there. So you cannot just come and fix the library and make it usable, let's say, and it's great library, you would say, and have some buildings that they are there unchecked for.
Mr. Member Agajanian, I do want to give other council members an opportunity to also ask questions. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Don't get mad at me, but I'm kind of going to take up on his theme. But, but let me first say, in 2008, I was on council when we voted to purchase Rockhaven. It was a very difficult decision. There was a private group that had already purchased the property, and it was their intention to continue the type of use that Gladys, Agnes, sorry.
Richards.
Agnes Richards was, was doing. This was, you know, care for, for frail individuals, although it was going to be coed, I believe. There was a certain councilman who was from the La Cressena area, who was very vocal about.
Adamant.
I'm sorry, adamant, I'm sorry, vocal and adamant and all those things. And so it was at that point that the city approached the private organization, well-respected, well-managed in certain healthcare facilities, and we took it away from them. And I never thought that 14 years later, that we would be here trying to, still trying to figure out what to do with Rockhaven. And I'm not sure that's anyone's fault, but I think it's, it speaks to the, the difficulty of the site, the difficulty of the style and type of buildings that existed and exist currently on the site. I am concerned that once we get into the construction, I mean, I presume that all construction is going to have to be up to code, modern code. Is that a fair assumption?
To provide ADA access and life safety, yes.
How about electrical?
It wouldn't be, I mean, that would depend. That would depend on the potential uses and how far that goes. Again, I think the main goal here is to stabilize these buildings so that they don't further deteriorate. And actually, to go back to the, the earlier question, the consultant team that, that gave us this estimate, while not structural engineers, they do specialize in historic improvements. The last time they did assess the property was in July of 2021. So that is on a fairly recent estimate of the current or more recent conditions of the buildings.
Okay, I mean, we're, we're talking about a museum use, and I don't know, I mean, you know, museums mean a lot of different things. You've got the very most, you know, passive type of museum, maybe like the Adobe Verdugo, or maybe the Doctor's House, where it is not a modern type of museum. But you've got others that are very interactive with electrical displays and interactive screens and audio and all that. I presume if we're going to get, if anyone looks at a more modern type, that there's going to be a lot of, you know, you're going to have to be putting in DSL lines and upgrading the, the wires and the junctions and the plumbing and all that. Seismic, I don't know if those folks looked at the seismic issues involved, foundational issues, asbestos, are we cleared on asbestos on these things? Do we know that yet?
That would ultimately be additional work as part of this process.
We don't know for sure.
That would be part of it.
But should asbestos be discovered, it's going to be quite a, you know, quite a deal to tear the plaster and, and do all that. So, you know, I've spoken to the senator, and I told him, throw in an extra $5 million, and this could really be perhaps something great. And he laughed and told me to get out of his way, but, but, I mean, you know, he said it was quite a, was not an easy feat getting the $8 million, that, that he had to work hard for that. So again, I'm not sure that that $8 million that we're going to get is really going to go very far, even in terms of preserving our core buildings, the Pine Cottage, the landscaping, the parking, and some of the ADA. I hope that that money doesn't run out. And I guess the answer is who would pay for any overruns would be the city or any other grants that we could get to, to make that work. So it's a very, we have to be very careful about that. Is there an EIR that's going to be required to?
That would depend on the extent of the work done to the site. What kind of things would be needed for parking? I think the intent, the goal would be to have a light touch. We can make improvements from an ADA perspective without triggering such things because that, that does kind of fall under the purview of updating those buildings. But depending on what we do to that site and how far that goes, we could find ourselves triggering that. But again, I think the intent here is to stabilize and get it back into good shape and not make significant changes where we would find ourselves in that position.
So we want to stay away from, obviously, and falling into the EIR trap, if you will, although we all love SEQA and its protection of historic resources. It would be ironic if our attempts to protect this resource somehow directed us and required us to do an extensive SEQA review. As far as the library, so the, you know, we were talking at one point about moving the, the fire station to the library, moving the library across the street, I think, where the Trader Joe's is now. But what if someone, what if someone files for the Montrose Library to be historic, which I think it just takes a simple application to be submitted? I think that would upset our whole plan of expanding the fire station and would maybe lock that Montrose Library in as where it is now. I'm just throwing that out there as a, as a concern, because I know Rockhaven was not originally on the list of historic resources, but it was efforts from the community to have it so designated. I imagine that, you know, our historic society is very concerned and they're very aware of our historic, and that would be, I don't know, an Art Deco style building or something of that nature, that library. I wouldn't be surprised if that is listed, applied for enlisted. So there's a lot of landmines that we've got to step through, you know, although it's not a question, I'm going to say, obviously, we need to move forward on this. We've tried every other option, from private industry to, you know, you name it, hotels, other healthcare agencies. It just hasn't worked out. So we've got to go forward, but we're going to have to be very careful in who's managing this, who's doing the project management, because the wrong, you know, making the wrong move could cause damage, could cause repairs that might trigger a SEQA, that might trigger expensive construction, additional construction, change orders, as Mr. Agajanian said. So who's ever doing it, I hope they're really good and they're very skilled in these historic renovations. You said we have a firm already that's looked at it. We just have to be really careful and make sure that they go in with a very delicate touch in this whole process.
Thank you, council member. Let's have some comments from the public. Well, I'll ask just a couple of, I don't want to take up more time because I know we have individuals who wish to be heard. Let me simply ask, in terms of the brand, you know, the sightlines in some of these buildings you indicated were a challenge for the library staff to be able to, I guess, monitor who's there, what's happening within the facility. But we have similar challenges at Brand Library, which is an adaptive reuse of an old home. Is that an issue? Have we, how have we addressed that? Perhaps that's not a question for you to answer, but I'd like to know how the library staff has addressed similar issues at the Brand Library facility, which is situated similarly.
Right, Mr. Mayor, if you would, Gary Schaefer is available to respond to that question.
Good afternoon. Nice to see you all. Gary Schaefer, Director, Library Arts and Culture, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In Brand Library, I think it's a little bit different because the spaces are all contiguous. So yes, there are various rooms, but staff can easily rotate around those rooms. Typically, the gallery spaces opened, and so folks can walk through there, but often the recital hall would be locked during the day. So I think the difference is in Rockhaven, if the library were distributed across several buildings, from a safety and security standpoint, it would require staff to, you know, go out of doors, walk up the hill, go and check different buildings at different times. Possibly cameras could be installed, but then that would require someone to be monitoring those constantly. So I just think there might be a little more challenges there. But if council wishes to move in this direction, we will do our best to accommodate.
Or alternative, alternatively to, to address that concern is obviously hiring of additional staff that could be housed and managing different buildings at the same time.
As we discussed as far as staff this morning, we have limited staff now. Obviously, additional staff can be hired, but that comes at actually great cost. So, thank you.
Sure. In terms of the parking issue, I'm curious to know, we have a historical adaptive reuse of a old craftsman home on Cedar, I believe, that's being used by Health for All, All for Health. I think it was called Heritage Park or whatever the city council decided to name that park. It's just a few blocks from City Hall. That facility has no parking, and it services people for medical and mental health needs. How is that able to function on that small plot of land without any parking?
Mr. Mayor, I'll let Mr. Calvert respond to that question. I'm not sure if it's familiar with the site, but more than likely that was grandfathered in, it was in existing use. Do you have any details?
Correct. We would need to look at that in a little bit more detail. And again, even with the parking here, there may be other alternatives to achieve that, but we do just want to kind of make clear for transparency's sake that if we do have to go a more difficult route, this is what it may take. Obviously, we would investigate other alternatives if they are available and if they are there.
Certainly. Well, I, I ask, I would ask staff to definitely look into that because if we've done it with one site, we should look at how we were able to do it and why we won't be able to replicate it in another site. In regard to the current library, the present library in Montrose, potentially being deemed historic or having a historic nature, if the city had to expand a fire station or had a public safety need, does that supersede historical designations?
Well, that's something we would have to follow up on. I guess it would depend on the nature of the changes that would have to occur in order to make those accommodations, how much of the exterior of that facility is impacted.
There's a lot of fond memories associated with that library. I've been to that library many times. I think it's a fine library. But I think watching our hillsides and some of the homes in the hills go up in flames in an era when we were dealing with increasing climate crisis and potential brush fires supersedes any type of historical designation needs of structures. And I think the public, especially the ones who've evacuated at least once in my lifetime from up there, would agree. With that, I'd like to turn to the public for their comments. Our first speaker, and I have these cards numbered in order. If there's another order that you wish to speak or wait before someone else does, please indicate so. John O'Malley, please approach the podium. You will have, everyone will have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is John O'Malley. I'm president of NAMI Glendale. NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. NAMI Glendale has been serving your community for approximately 40 years. We have been helping families of seriously mentally ill children and other family members get through that crisis that faces their lives. We have support groups, we have educational facilities, we have training of really all kinds, and we've been helping families, not only in the Glendale community, but throughout the United States. We need a home. We have been working out of DeeDee Hirsch's facility on Colorado for a number of years. We have some of their space, which we have used pre-pandemic, and they've been very gracious, but we've run out of space, frankly, there. We have also been allowed to use some space at Glendale Adventist Hospital occasionally for meetings, which has also been very helpful. But today, we need space. We need space in order to have our meetings, to have our support groups when they go back to in person, as they hopefully soon will. We need the space for our office. We now work out of a public storage facility on Colorado and Eagle Rock, which is not ideal, but is spacious. But we need space in order to operate. We think we can grow, and with additional space, we can help the Glendale community in a much better fashion than we have in the past. But that's why we're here to talk about Rockhaven. We've been introduced to the Rockhaven facility through the efforts of Friends of Rockhaven. They have shown us around. We've seen one building that would be with rehabilitation, very suitable for our needs. It's known as the Willow Building. It's a two-story structure. And that could be a real lifesaver for us and for the people we serve. Now, I heard today of the $8 million, of course, I've heard of that before, but also of the difficulty of finding the appropriate use for the property at large. We do not, of course, express an opinion as to whether the library would be appropriate or not, but we do acknowledge that our use would be very compatible with a library use on that area. Our use would also be perfectly compatible with a museum use, if that is what ultimately occurs on that site. We could bring the efforts of volunteers. Admittedly, we are on a shoestring. We rely mostly for voluntary contributions from our families that we serve. We rely mostly for voluntary contributions from our families that we serve, but we could bring a lot of volunteer effort and some professional effort to this endeavor to rehab one of the spaces if it were brought up to the level of the kind of condition that the gentleman was speaking about a few moments ago. So we think we could be a good partner for Rock Haven. Excuse me, my time is signaling me, but we think we could be a good partner for Rock Haven and for the city of Glendale. And we ask for your consideration that if it comes to the point where we get to talk about uses, that we be considered for that purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. Next speaker is Barbara Knighton. If I mispronounce anyone's name, please correct me.
Fine with mine. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Barbara Knighton, and I am here also to speak for NAMI Glendale. We have aligned with the Friends of Rock Haven, and we wish to express our interest and our support as community stakeholders in the renovation and restoration project you're considering at this site. We hope you will consider, and you are, we're glad to be here today, the community input and participation as you consider plans for this site. As you may be aware, there is strong community interest in this site. We were informed of your meeting today to discuss these plans, and over the weekend, we were able to get 85, actually as recently as noon today, an additional nine signatures, so 94 signatures, from people in the community. This was from people attending either the Friends of Rock Haven Craft Fair or the Montrose Farmers Market. So 85 people signed on to this statement of support. So here, I'm going to read the statement. "I support Friends of Rock Haven and NAMI Glendale in advocating for the renovation and preservation of the Rock Haven Sanatorium as, number one, a tribute and memorial to Agnes Richards, the founder of Rock Haven, and her vision of compassionate mental health care. Number two, a historic park, museum, and additionally, a community center providing resources for social connection and education. And thirdly, a community resource and a home for local nonprofit groups like NAMI, like NAMI Glendale, promoting mental health and mental health wellness, suicide prevention, which is something that's needed in our community now, and education and community support." People who signed on to this statement were not all residents of the city of Glendale, but all of them were community members concerned about the outcome for the Rock Haven site. Many people, excuse me, many people expressed their sense of frustration and impatience with the lack of action by the city of Glendale. As this beautiful site has fallen into disrepair and decay from neglect, we urge you to act as good stewards for this valuable property and to move forward promptly with a plan that will make this site available for the enjoyment of the community. In conclusion, through the last two years of the pandemic, we have learned that for mental health, people need people. People need people, and people need a safe place to meet, and they need a purpose. We believe that Rock Haven can be that space to, for people to meet, for people to have a purpose, and to feel safe in the community. Thank you for your commitment to public service, to all of you. It's a heavy lift, I know, and thank you for your hard work on behalf of the public.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marco Lundgren.
Good afternoon. My name is Marco Lundgren, and I'm a staff member with Senator Portantino. I'm stepping in for Art of this afternoon on behalf of the senator. The senator was proud to work with the Friends of Rock Haven, the governor's office, and the city on securing the $8 million through the city of Glendale to forever preserve this historical landmark so that future generations of Californians will learn about Agnes Richards and her wonderful story and sensitive care for women that was 100 years ahead of its time. The senator is ready to aid the city any way possible as it considers moving forward with opening Rock Haven to the public, and he looks forward to the progress the city is making and is eager to get back inside this California treasure. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next is Barbara Petersmeyer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Barbara Petersmeyer. I live right across the street from Rock Haven, and I'm glad we have the $8 million for however we're going to use it. And I've been looking at the map. My main concern is the parking. So if we have a renovated museum, we have rentable space, which we're going to need eventually, and we have the library, I'm not sure exactly how much space we have for parking on the site. Yeah, you mentioned, Mr. Calvert, ADA parking, which I understand. So then most of it would be diagonal parking on Honolulu, which is not going to give us very much parking. And as you all know, I live across the street, and there is no parking available. So that's my main concern. I think all of this is, you know, a great idea. I'm not relieved for the housing. That would be a whole nother aspect of lack of parking unless they had underground parking built. But it seems, when we saw the original plans, there was more parking space available over in the west part of the property, and that seems to be taken up now, but I'm not exactly certain. I guess it would be the library in the front, and then where it says vacant parking in the north side. So just consider the parking and the people who live in the neighborhood. And you want people to come there, and you want to be able to rent that space. And who is going to be able to rent it if they can't park it nearby? So, thank you very much.
Ms. Petersmeyer, you said that you had concerns about housing. Would you not object to housing if the housing that was there provided additional parking for the individuals and families visiting the site?
If the housing had its own subterranean parking that would take care of the people who live there, then that would take care of that. But if it's taking up more room from the site for potential parking for the people who wanted to rent out space, then of course, that wouldn't work.
But if it provided parking enough for the housing and for the patrons, additional?
That would work.
Okay. Joanna Linkhorst?
Mayor Hesakian, members of council and staff, thank you for being the ones to save Rock Haven. Thank you for moving forward with the 14-year-old plans to finally create Rock Haven Historic Park. In the last several years, I have seen so many examples of what can happen at Rock Haven, many in Glendale itself, like the Adobes and the Duke Magin Nature Center, with the involvement of volunteers, nonprofits, patients. But ever since I became involved with Rock Haven, I've been hearing things I don't hear associated with other parks, like housing. I see no other park property, and all of Rock Haven is park property, being considered for housing. And the idea that Rock Haven should be the park that pays for itself. Is that true of Cerritos Park or Mayor's Bicentennial Park? I understand the feelings of financial pressure, but patience is a part of the original plan. George Chapchan said it on the city's own documentary, that we would get the park open and, as the money became available, get the buildings open. But I would like to draw attention to the fact that Rock Haven is already bringing in money. Trader Joe's at the end of Montrose Shopping Park was a part of the original plans with the idea that the money from the land lease would support the historic park and library. Without Rock Haven, there would be no Trader Joe's, and for around eight years, the City General Fund has been collecting that land lease money. And many years ago, a well was drilled on the northwest corner of the park, a little blue pencil marking up there, and that area is being leased to the Crescent Valley Water District. 14 years ago, city council knew the fire station needed to expand, but that the property anchoring the Montrose Shopping Park and the Rock Haven were valuable. Their predecessors, your predecessors, knew saving CV history was important and that a new library didn't need to be built but moved, leaving the old dealership land for profitable, attractive, commercial enterprise to bring in funds. I hope you can keep these things in mind as you make your decisions about Rock Haven Historic Park and Montrose. While I have time, a couple of reminders. Rock Haven is listed on the Historic Registry of both the state and the national level. As much as I love your little colored pencil map, 13 years ago, you guys paid for an assessment of the property, and there is an architectural map that perhaps should be being used instead of little pencil markings and things, so you can get a more accurate idea of what's going on up at the property. And there, oh, those nine signatures I wanted to let you know that came in today, they came from Glendale High School. We had several students that were very interested as a part of the art fair that we had this last weekend. And we, Mr. Calvert and I, were discussing grants for the library, such as looking into Carnegie-level grants to see what we can get done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Tom Petersmeyer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers. I'm Tom Petersmeyer. I'm related to Barbara, and I live across the street from Rock Haven. I just want to talk about something very simple. When I go out to get the paper in the morning, the north side of the street is full of cars for people who work at an electrical contractor right next door to Rock Haven. I also learned a while back that there's no restrictions on parking out in front of our place. There is down the way toward Trader Joe's. So my idea was just put up some signs, two-hour parking only, and you'll save a lot of spaces for future usage. That's all.
Thank you. And we have one caller, or how many callers do we have on the line?
Mayor, we have two callers at this time.
All right, let's take our callers. Three minutes each.
Francesca Smith, you have three minutes. Francesca, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. Good afternoon. My name's Francesca Smith. I'm an architectural historian. I live in Glendale. Most or many of you know me. I hope that you received the letter that I spent time on and sent yesterday with quite a few different points regarding this surprisingly complicated decision. So first, I wanted to remind everyone that I don't believe that grant was intended to assist with the complete rehabilitation of the building site. I'm not certain, since I haven't seen any conditions or anything. It doesn't seem to be publicly available. A brief overview of my ideas are, first, that the council is being inappropriately asked to make a consequential decision that's subject to CEQA review. It is by its general nature, the activity is capable of causing a physical change in the environment. As a few people have reminded you, or us, Rock Haven Sanitarium Historic District is a mandatory historical resource. It includes 15 of the 16 buildings, as well as the landscape and setting. Exhibit one was prepared in error. It contains a number of errors. In fact, the National Register nomination is what prevails, which is the listing. All of this should be contained in an EIR, not in a quick meeting informed by an inaccurate pencil drawing, as Ms. Linkhorst brought up. The library relocation has been part of the city's plan since 2007, as you all know. The city has owned the property for 14 years. It has not been properly mothballed. Fundally, that is a violation of the Glendale Municipal Code as it relates to historic properties. It's 15.20.120 duty to maintain historical resources. It's called demolition by neglect. I heard Councilman Agajanian at 3:37 talking about a chance of collapse, some really surprising things about the city owning a property for 14 years and not even stabilizing the roofs. The existing library, as was discussed, has not been evaluated for historic significance. It was architect-designed. It's more than 11,000 square feet currently and has 38 parking spaces. So I'm not quite sure if that is a very helpful use for this. I heard from Bradley Calvert that the roofs are kind of caving in and talking about $4 million to stabilize the site. It has been the city's responsibility to maintain this site since they acquired this property.
Thank you, Francesca.
Is that three minutes?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Could I have one more half-minute, if you please?
You may have half a minute.
Thank you very much. So there's no mention of using the mandatory California Historic Building Code. Historic Building Services Incorporated, their website talks about renovation services. I don't really know who they are. But all of this amounts to a lot of consideration to make this very complex decision without all the information you need. So an alternative analysis would be required in an EIR, even though I heard that called falling into an EIR trap, unfortunately. It's the way lead agencies make these decisions. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next caller.
Fernando Roldan, you have three minutes. Fernando, go ahead.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Fernando Old Don, longtime resident of Glendale and also an advocate for people with disabilities. To my fellow citizens of Glendale, I would like to ask that we build some extra apartments, especially for some of us who are disabled. And if you plan to put more apartments or more units near that site, I would ask that please have some of them have at least wheelchair-accessible bathrooms for rolling showers to go through. That's one request I would like to make. Make it also affordable for people with disabilities, such as myself, or not just people who are on low income or social security, but also people with disability who work, such as myself. I request that from the mayor and, of course, the city council, and of course, the project managers who are doing this project at Rock Haven. It sounds like an interesting project, but I do ask that changes be made if you do plan to make more units. Thank you.
Thank you. No more callers?
Mayor, there are no more callers.
All right, so that will close the public comment, and I'd like to invite my colleagues to provide their direction to staff, and hopefully we'll maybe have some consensus if we're fortunate. Councilmember Agajanian.
I would suggest first, an engineer, to study all those buildings before we decide anything. I mean, this will be a waste of time. We decide something, and then it becomes that some of these buildings are not strong enough. Whatever we decide, I think then will be, whatever we have decided will be wasted. Time will be wasted, probably money will be wasted until and when we learn about each and every one of these buildings. Maybe some of them has to be demolished. I do not know. As I walked in, there are some of the buildings, as you, I said before, the building was caved in the floor. If the floor is in such a situation, doesn't mean, I do not know, of course, the floor is on a slab. It's another type of a floor we have. I do not know. But if it's caved up, the tree roots are causing this, possibly is causing same damage to the columns, the slab, the piles, if there is any pile, for the buildings. I do not know. It's not just ruins the floor, it ruins everything. I do not know, there are beams on the floor I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the roof. I'm just talking about the base of the buildings. I do not know what they are. But somebody should study those before we go ahead and do anything with any building or any decision we have to do. It has to be, the building should be studied structurally and others problems that later we will face with. So, however, if that's not the case, we don't want to do it, and we want to do something. The idea which I had was to have some affordable housing, but where it has been marked green or blue, under that to have parking, one level parking for entire that green area or blue area, which will serve the affordable housing and the parking for those who would come to use this park. That's my idea about this. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Yeah? Well, councilmember Najari, then councilmember Devine.
So I'll be brief. We have $8 million. It must be used to develop a museum on the site. Before we can develop the museum, we need to stabilize the buildings to the best extent that we can. So I support going forward. So I support going forward, leaving the library issues aside for now, but to do the most immediate preservation of what we have with the eye of creating a museum at the Pine Lodge, Pine Cottage. And let's see how far the money goes. I'm afraid that money isn't going to get us to the finish line, but we have to be judicious in the expenditures, in the project management, and in renovation, and that's where I'm at.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Devine.
Okay. Well, we have $8 million. That's been said repeatedly. This is our opportunity, I feel, after 14 years and going through all sorts of iterations, to get something done here. We have an opportunity to open a museum or to start on a museum project. That's what the money, the funding is earmarked for, and that's what we have to do. I think that will bring in people. I think we have to start with the landscaping, and the bottom line is to get Rockhaven open to the public safely and to the best of our ability with $8 million. Sure, there are going to be issues. I know that we're not just going to go in there willy-nilly and start renovating. We are going to have a consultant, correct, Mr. Calvert? We're going to have an engineer that's going to look at these buildings and tell us, this one is worth saving, this one we can't, et cetera. So that's going to be done. We are going to have engineers on the job to make sure that things are done right. I think the important thing is to make Rockhaven safe for the public, have the garden there. Everyone wants the garden. I think would be a great, I mean, we looked at it, there's a lot of possibilities for a beautiful garden. The parking, I think that's essential. We can work on that as well with the $8 million. All of the things that we talked about today that would be covered by the $8 million, the stabilization, the roof, the landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's time that we do it. Let's move forward and open Rockhaven for people to enjoy. I know we get emails from people that don't even live in Glendale, and they come and visit when it is open. So I'm all for it. And as far as the library is concerned, way too much money at this point. Maybe sometime in the future, another senator or an assemblywoman will donate or find another $10 million for us, and we can, this is going to be a process. This is going to be a project that's done in phases, but we have to start somewhere. And I think this is the time to start. And that's my bottom line.
Councilmember Brotman?
Okay. Sounds like there may be a consensus here, because I think what I heard Councilmember Najarian and Councilmember Devine say was pretty much in line with one another, and I agree. I think we should take the first step, not waste any more time. So stabilizing the buildings, the landscaping, the museum, put in the angled parking, set aside the library question for now. You know, there are a lot of great ideas that have been put forward for uses of, for the other buildings. I mean, I can think of so many exciting things, you know, spaces for nonprofits like NAMI would be wonderful. A cool coffee shop that would bring people in would be great, and it does generate a little revenue for us, so that would be a bonus. You know, an event space that people can rent out for things would be great. We've had emails talking about, you know, a demonstration garden, a native demonstration garden. We've heard about an art space. One thing I would love is, I've been talking to the city manager about someday doing a fix-it clinic or a repair café where people come to get things repaired. You know, there's so many great ideas, but I think we can take this in two steps. I think we can get moving forward with the $8 million with the basic requirements to get the site open, and then we can have, you know, a separate track where we should, you know, let's see how far that $8 million goes. I mean, we may run into some structural problems that we don't know. So let's see how far that goes and what we can do with that. And then, and let's be thinking about these other uses, and let's go out and get some community input. Obviously, we're not going to be able to do all these things. We're going to have to balance things that generate revenue against things that we want that don't necessarily bring in revenue. I think that can be another track that we go down, and we could take our time on that. But that's pretty much where I am.
Thank you. All right, so I agree with some of the things my colleagues have said. I wouldn't say I disagree, but I hope that my colleagues can see further beyond what's just in front of us for some of the other items. I do believe that we should not waste any more time in terms of moving forward with possible or the future plans of a museum, as was designated by the money that we received from the state. And I thank Senator Portentino for securing these funds and giving council and staff the kick in the pants we needed to actually do something about this site and moving forward with some plans. So I do think that if we can communicate with the Friends of Rockhaven and other interested parties, whether it's NAMI or anyone else that could possibly be a part of this, National Alliance for Mental Illness, also known as NAMI, about a potential site that they could use, how they would be able to use it, what that would look like, and identify the buildings where they could have such uses, as well as a museum. Let's do that, because that helps us get the ball moving before there's any further deterioration. I do also agree that we need to have a full assessment of the conditions of the buildings and looking at some of them. It's interesting that looking at those, the drawings, that one of the buildings, Building L, which I think would be probably a very utilitarian building that could be used for community use, it has archways, it seems in pretty good condition, it faces Honolulu, is not one of the historical ones yet. I think it's probably one that could get a lot of use if the community was to be able to access it, right? And they could access it soon. But I understand the frustrations of this site being potentially considered for other uses besides what it is, but it is a unique site in a very unique place, and we want, I would like to do right by this community. I know that the library use may seem like a lot of money, but I don't think any amount of money, first of all, the amount of money that we would have to spend for that, given what we're investing in, in terms of the community and the use and the families, would also be a draw for the other uses there, is critical. Because creating this place as a museum and just having it as a museum, I can just point to other beautiful structures in Southern California that remain empty. The Southwest Museum in Highland Park, just over the hill, is a perfect example of a wonderful museum, wonderful structure that no one visits now and it's absolutely closed. I do not want to see that same fate with limited access. But it's not a full-time functioning museum any longer, or at least as it once was during its heyday, right? And the last thing I would want to see is a similar fate for the Rockhaven site, where I think if we were to have a library, if we were to make that investment, which we have a chance to tie two things together, ensure the public safety for that area, which is a high-fire-risk area. If it means that we have to look at a potential portion of the site for additional parking or to have some affordable housing, which, by the way, I don't believe there is a lot of affordable housing in the northern part of the city where we have invested in others, it could strike a number of notes for the community, serve multiple purposes. And I think that if we were to structure this in phases with the fire station, the fire chief just heard the queue and came in right at the precise time. With the fire station renovation obviously being the last part of it, I think we can achieve all our goals. I think we need to be very firm with our legislators in letting them know that this is a high-fire-risk area. We certainly have the evidence for it, and we can actually ask, I believe, for funds to do something with that fire station as well. And in terms of, you know, why would we consider affordable housing? We've used affordable housing projects and funds that come from the sale or lease of land or whatever it may be for a number of other uses and other opportunities in the city. I don't know how many of my colleagues agree on these and how we would determine this or what sort of a checklist we would have to do this, but that's where I am coming from. And again, I do think that the public should be able to access Rockhaven. We should start the plans for the museum and identify the building where we want it. I think there's going to be a lot of work that gets into it, and I think when people have a goal that they're working towards, more people are willing to pitch in and help. So that's my opinion, but I'm very steadfast in my fire station, library proposal. And for me, if we can't have that, unfortunately, I would say that would be, for me, a deal-breaker, because I do think that they go hand in hand. Do any of my colleagues wish to make a proposal?
I would like to see what has been offered here to identify consultant to determine commercial, community uses, solicit opportunities. So is that we are voting now?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, but as has been mentioned repeatedly, as part of that next step will be structural analysis for the safety reasons of those buildings in conjunction with the use of, commercial uses of that site. So we will need to go and put some pen to paper, come back to you with some concepts and some more accurate estimates of cost.
So we are not voting on this now?
There is a motion, and I recommend that you vote on that motion directing us to move forward with the next steps.
Okay, may I move?
Sure. Before we do that, what would the next steps look like based on council comments to you, Mr. Calvert?
Based on the feedback that we have received, it would be to move forward with stabilization of the buildings, roof, the grounds themselves, with the priority of getting the grounds open to the public safely, moving forward with the museum. And then, once those pieces are either lined up and in place and moving forward, to then start the consideration of the additional uses, such as if we want to revisit the library discussion, affordable housing. I do believe that we would need to probably bring on a consultant to identify any kind of commercial uses that would go in there, so we understand what would best fit. But all of those things being addressed after we deal with the grounds, the museum, and the stabilization of everything else.
I would simply say that before we look at the commercial uses, we should look at what the costs of rehabilitating some buildings would be based on those, because that will also drive the discussion with any, whatever it is, coffee shop or a fix-it lab or whatever it may be. All those things are going to have to be a part of that discussion. It's also important for us to know. So that should go hand in hand with these next steps. In terms of the housing components, for me at least, it's not simply to have housing for the sake of housing. But if we can have housing there, that then helps us enhance the use of the primary focus of preserving this site. That would be the goal. How do we do one to be able to do the other, including moving the library over? And I don't know if my colleagues agree or disagree on that, but that would be my goal.
Yeah. Basically, can you just begin?
Your microphone.
I don't know that that was included in your motion, but I would think that the motion should be that we move forward with the proposal of the museum, landscaping, park, parking, the stabilization, and the rehab of the buildings. As much as we can do with the $8 million, everything else will come in phases, and that will come to us at a later date. But let's get started now, and that's...
Oh, the study of it.
Of course, of course. That's included, of course. We can't, we can't just go in there willy-nilly, Councilmember Agajanian, and just say, okay, we're going to do this or that. We have to have studies done, of course. So would that be your motion?
I will add to my motion.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, just to comment, Mr. Mayor, on what you said. I think right now, I'm a little skeptical about the library question, about moving the library. I'm a little skeptical about whether housing is appropriate there. However, I think what we're doing now is we're not closing any doors. We're just taking the first step, and I think all these questions we can come back to and address with more information. And I think as we're working on the site, as we see structurally what's going on on the site, we'll have a better sense of like what these buildings, you know, are really going to need, and we can further define the costs of this library concept and look at these other things. So I don't think, we're not closing the door on anything. I think let's leave it open. And that's what I would have, and if I could just say one little side thing, I just want to say that when we do, when we get to the outreach question, let's make sure we include the Historic Society, because it sounds like they feel like they've not been as much of part of this discussion as they should be, so let's just make sure we cover off on them.
Again, I hear my colleagues, but I've seen municipal amnesia take over before, and unless we can explicitly say that we are still going to explore the idea of a library and potentially some sort of development of the vacant lot, whether it's for parking or housing in order to allow us to do the other parts of this project, which everyone, I think, on this dies agreed, $8 million may not cover all of the expenses, I would have to abstain from any vote.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as part of the study that we'll bring to council at a later time, we can always include, commission the consultant to also look into fine-tuning the cost estimate for the library, to take a closer look at the site, and if there are additional opportunities that we haven't thought of, we'll make that part of a report for your consideration so that it doesn't fall off the radar.
Well, there's a motion.
Second.
Yeah, I'm sorry, before there's a vote, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I understand it, that the motion would be to move forward with the studies necessary to stabilize the buildings, improve the grounds, open the museum, do whatever required for parking requirements, as well as public outreach or stakeholder outreach. That's the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia would also add to a further analysis of the potential for the library and/or affordable housing.
Yes. That's my motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Well, there was a second by Councilmember Devine. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Since it's my motion, I have to say yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Kusakian?
Yes, thank you. If there is no other items on this agenda, and I don't believe there is, may we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming to this special meeting, taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us. We appreciate you. We will wait until we change over, and then we'll call to order the city council meeting. All right, let us call to order the city council meeting.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Kusakian?
Here.
May we please have the closed session items read into the record?
One would be closed session. One, a conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Salazar versus the City of Glendale, LASC case number BC700257. B, conference with legal counsel pending litigation, State Farm versus City of Glendale et al., LASC case number 21G, DCV00229. C would be conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Sayadyan versus the City of Glendale, LASC case number 19STCV14065. D would be conference with legal labor negotiators, the city-designated negotiators attending the closed session, Arubik Galanian, Michael J. Garcia, Jalen Van Miden, John Tuktayan, Amy Marn, Jason Bradford, Carl Provelitis, and Laura Calty. The name of the employee organization is Glendale Police Officers Association. E would be conference with legal labor negotiators, the city-designated negotiators attending the closed session, Arubik Galanian, Michael J. Garcia, Jalen Van Miden, Amy Marn, Jason Bradford, and Sylvia Alonsis. The name of the employee organization is the Glendale Management Association.
All right. Do you anticipate reporting out on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, we anticipate reporting on item 1B.
All right, so that will recess the closed session.